Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, January 6, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And I'll call to order the Free Town Board Selecting Meeting. Tonight, we will be going into Executive Session and then coming back in an open session. We're going into Executive Session for the following reason. Master on Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the Chair declares, and I do, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. One thing to note, this meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. So I'll entertain a motion to go into Executive Session.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Now in Executive Session. We are now back in open session from Executive Session. I'll move onto Agenda Item 2, which is a presentation from the town clerk regarding the 2025 Annual Town Election. Cheryl?
Hello. Nice to be with you all again this evening. So just doing my presentation for you regarding the 2025 Annual Town Election. So it will be held per Free Town bylaws on the first Monday of April, which will be April 7, 2025. It will be located at the Free Town Elementary School, all precincts voting there. And the hours are set from 12:00 PM until 8:00 PM. The positions on the ballot, we have several positions up this year. We have Selectmen and Personnel Board Member for a term for three years, Assessor for a three-year term, one Board of Health member for a three-year term. Ms. Mary Bowen, who is the current incumbent, has notified me in writing that she will not be seeking reelection, so that currently is going to be a vacant position. Hopefully, we'll have someone take out nomination papers. Cemetery Commission, we have James Joes, who's the current incumbent, it's a one-year, it's a one position for a three-year term. Finance Committee, we have the three incumbents. Again, three-year term. Library Trustees, that's going to be the same as with Mary Bowen. Both Linda Fournier and Beverly Sadek, who are up for reelection this year, both have informed me in writing that they will not be seeking reelection, so that will be two vacancies. Planning Board Member, Mr. Mello is up again. That's a five-year term. Water and Sewer Commissioner, Mr. Sadek, is up again for a three-year term. And the Regional School District Committee, we have one position up for a three-year term. Moving on. The registration deadline, so 5:00 PM on Friday, March 28th, that's going to be the last time folks will be able to register to vote. If you're already an existing registered voter in town, you don't have to re-register for this election. This is for anyone new who's moved into town or newly registered to vote. You can, you have several ways in which to do that. As always, you could do it in person, at our town clerk's office, with the Board of Registitors, during normal business hours, or online at votenma.com. We've already discussed about already being an existing registered voter, you don't have to re-register for that. So nomination papers, that's going to be the next slide. So nomination papers, as tradition here in Free Town, are always available the first day back from the holiday break, which was last Thursday. We've had some folks already come on in and pull out nomination papers. There are minimum of 40 certified signatures for the regular offices. For Regional School Committee members or candidates, it will have to be 50 certified signatures. The difference with that is it's a formula that's used per the MGLs, it's 1% of the last governor's race, 1% of the voters that turned out. And because the Regional School Committee is combined with Lakeville, we have the same election date. Because on Election Day, we choose the Free Town Representatives and the Lakeville Representatives, we have to take 1% of the total vote. So it's 50, and that's the only one that's different. The deadline to obtain papers is going to be Wednesday, February 12th, at 5:00 PM. My office is open until that time. And the deadline to return the papers is going to be two days later, which will be 5:00 PM on Friday, February 14th, Valentine's Day.
Friday as well, it's going to be a busy day.
So nomination papers, who is eligible to pull papers? Any current resident of the town. A current 2025 local census has to be completed. Those were mailed out last week, should be hitting homes very shortly if they haven't already. You have to be over the age of 18 and a registered voter. We have the key dates to remember that we just discussed. Then Thursday, January 2nd, was the first day to pull out nomination papers. The last day will be Wednesday, February 12th, to pull nomination papers. And 5:00 PM on Friday will be the last day to submit those for certification. Vote by mail, which will be Agenda Item Number 3 to discuss on your agenda this evening. The Board of Registitors held a meeting on December 3rd, and we discussed the ability to vote by mail. And as you can remember, I've come before you several years now, and last year, I did let you know that I was coming in this year with the opposite request. So last year, with all of the state elections, vote by mail is mandatory for all state and federal elections. We have no choice in that, in those elections. The state does give us allowance to vote, to opt in or opt out of vote by mail for our locals. We piggybacked last year on all of the postcard notifications that get paid for by the state to do vote by mail, so it would be less of a confusion last year for our voters, so that they wouldn't say, "Well, why could I vote, you know, why could I vote by mail in the presidential primary, but for my local, I can't?" So to minimize confusion, we decided to go with it. And it, we just, we incurred the cost for mailing out the ballots, but we didn't have the cost for the notification. This year, we held the meeting with the Board of Registitors, and they voted to recommend that the Board of Selectmen take a roll call vote at their next posted meeting to opt out of vote by mail strictly due to the cost and the amount of return. For local elections, not many people turn out to vote. I do have the numbers of the last elections for folks that requested vote by mail applications, I mean, vote by mail ballots, and then return them. So just for a prime example, last year, we're in between the March and September state primaries, 975 vote by mail ballots were requested and sent, only 467 came back. So that was a 47%. So it lends to show you that folks are going to vote if they want to vote. So that was the reasoning behind that recommendation, which you folks will take up on the next Agenda item. And we can discuss that further when that comes. Next slide is just, again, just a reminder of when the polls are open and all the precincts will be voting from, at the same location between 12 and 8. And then the next slide. With the addition of the new doorway on the rear end of the gymnasium. I'll come before the Board, closer to the election date, just to go over this in detail and to do more of a public service announcement. I did have a CISA assessment conducted by the state, which is the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Team from the state come out with the Mass State Police back in October, when the door was being constructed. One of the main things that's going to change is the current door that we use that does dual capacity in enter and exit. They would like us to create that as just an exit location. And then the doorway that was newly built, have that be the entrance. The reason for that is safety concerns, as we can see last week in New Orleans, where there was a vehicle that plowed into pedestrians. If we have the queue line set up at the existing door now, it could have potential danger. Where folks will be queuing up across that parking lot, whether accidentally or intentionally, in order to keep people safe, we're going to have the queue line towards the back of the building. I'm working with the Facilities Manager at the school, as well as the principal, on getting roads blocked off during elections and things. But that's still a work in progress. And again, I'll be before the Board to discuss that in detail and do more of a public service announcement for folks. But everything else hasn't changed on that end. And then that was it. That's my brief presentation.
All right, thank you very much.
If you have any questions?
So will it change the layout inside where you go to vote?
Yep, so because just of the space, when you come in, Precincts 1 and 2 will be to the left, Precincts 3 will be to the right, which would actually help, because Precincts 2 and 3 share a ballot because of the representative districts, so less confusion on where to insert your ballot towards the end at the ballot tabulator, and then just exit to the right. So that will be training that I'll be conducting with both the election staff, and I have to train them yearly anyway on the laws, so we're going to have the state come down, and we're actually going to do the training at the school. We're just looking to narrow a date down.
Cheryl, the 975 that was requested, right, the 47% you spoke about?
Yep.
You said September, March through September, is that when it was?
No, no, that was the annual town election that was held between March and September. So those are the folks who requested ballots from the postcards that the state had sent out, so.
Right. Let's try and gauge how many, how many asked you for our annual town meeting that requested? Do we have those metrics?
For our annual town election?
Yeah.
So we didn't have it in 2023. And we didn't have it in 2022.
Right, it's like COVID, it was kind of, you know, you're obviously going to have more people, like, it was only, was it, I mean, I'm trying to remember how that worked.
COVID was, you can't compare anything to 2020, it was just a bear.
It's one of those years.
We had every situation.
Yeah, and just, um...
And those numbers were off. The state was, had, vote by mail has been around since 2016, but getting the laws written into the books and how we process it, 2020 happened, and we were getting the postcards in, but the state still hadn't set up the system nor the procedures on how to input those postcards. So it was literally flying by the seat of pants, week by week.
It's crazy.
Sounds like the state.
But now that it's, they've ironed out, there's still a lot of kinks, it's still a work in progress, but as of right now, at least there's a procedure in place.
Still, it's only four years away, four years ago, so they have plenty of time to catch up, I guess.
And then just that, just in case anyone's curious, like, I know cost is the main concern of why you probably shouldn't do that, it's cost and it's just...
Cost, cost is, so, you know, investment on return, right?
Yeah.
So if people were, we would have no issue if folks who requested ballots would actually return the ballots, because it makes your, all the work worthwhile.
Yeah.
But they don't.
Yeah.
Because again, if, if there is, it kind of runs like town meeting, right? If they're interested, if they're a candidate who's on there, they're going to return a ballot.
Yeah, right, yeah.
If they don't see who they want, they're not going to return it, or they're going to use it. Unfortunately, which we saw during the state elections, folks were using the vote by mail ballots as, like, sample ballots? To see what their ballot was going to look like, even though it's available online to them, and I can email them specimen ballots. You know, unfortunately, sometimes too, with the, with the March primaries, presidential primaries, sometimes by the time the primary election date comes, some of those candidates have already dropped out.
Yeah.
So people who have voted for those folks get a blank.
Yeah.
Because they're no longer a viable candidate.
Yeah.
So it's, it's tricky. It's tricky.
You still can get absentee ballots, though.
Absentee ballots will always, will always happen. That's written into the Massachusetts Constitution, it's for cause. So if you're, if you're unable to attend the election because you're out of town, or there's a disability that prevents you from attending, or if you have a religious belief, absentee is always available to you.
Perfect. Cheryl, that was going to be my next follow-up question, that doesn't exclude anybody that has a legitimate reason that they can't be there for.
And because our town election is on a Monday, I have to stay open until 5:00 PM the day before, meaning the business day. So on that Friday, when everyone leaves at 12, our office is still open for absentee until 5:00 PM.
Okay.
So that's, that's a good point for people, you know, because sometimes last minute, they realize, "Oh, I'm working," or "My boss is sending me out here, I don't have, I'm not going to be able to make it."
Yep, that makes a lot of sense. Okay, you guys, any issues or any issues with moving forward the motion to opt out?
No, not at all. Thank you, Cheryl.
All right, thank you, Cheryl. I'll just do this, so I hereby move that the Board of Selectmen opt out, vote by mail for the next annual local town election on Monday, April 7, 2025, in accordance with Master on Law, Chapter 54, 25B-A1, with the understanding that the absentee for cause is still an option for those voters who are eligible. So I'll make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
May I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it has to be done in a roll call vote?
Yeah. Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
All right. Of course, as soon as Luanne walks out, we have a...
Thank you very much. I do have to leave at 7, for 7, because I have to bring my daughter to run them.
Okay. Good luck with that.
Good luck.
Thank you. It's never an off-season for sports, right?
Never. Never, never. All right. Luanne, you missed the roll call, but Deb got your back, so.
Thank you, sorry, I'm just lazy. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 4, discussion of awarding the request for quotes for chipping or removal of brush yard waste pile at the transfer station. Looks like we get two different quotes back, or two different bids. I was just a little bit concerned on this, or not concerned, a little interested. So there's like, there's two different options, right? Alternatives?
Yeah. One was to chip it on-site, and one was to remove it. They all quoted for chipping on-site. Northeastern Tree Service quoted two different times with two different amounts.
So did we get the 15, 8?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. All right. So it looks like the low bid was Northeastern Tree Services, for $15,800.
Did you say why they went down? No, I'm not going to complain. Went in the right direction, so.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion to award the bid for, or the request for quotes for, sorry, let me just sell that over. I'll entertain a motion to award the bid for chipping or removal of brush yard waste pile at the transfer station to Northeastern Tree Services, Inc.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then now we just have the agreement with them, so, Agenda Item 5, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Free Town and Northeastern Tree Services, Inc., for chipping of brush and yard waste pile at the transfer station.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Agenda Item 6, discussion of vote on the amount of the donation to the Free Town Regional Food Pantry.
Yeah, we voted on this already, but we didn't, we weren't explicit on the amount.
Yep.
So you really should revote, so I can get this processed.
Okay.
So I think we've discussed possibly 9,500.
Yep. Everyone comfortable with that?
Yep.
Sounds good to me. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to, for $9,500 as the amount of the donation to the Free Town Regional Food Pantry.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now we have Agenda Item 7, discussion of vote, discussion and vote on whether to approve the agreement between the Town of Free Town and the Town of Lakeville for boarding and associated services for 1-1, 2025 through 12-31, 2025, for the animal or dog boarding, right? It looks like the yearly association went up from 250 to 500.
Correct.
Which is a percentage-wise, a big jump, but it's still, I'm not going to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the rest, I looked at the rest of the agreement, pretty standard.
It's the same as it was before.
Yeah, I didn't, didn't see anything jump out at me there.
Right. No, and they're always good to us, so.
Yeah, I have no issues with this. Yeah.
This is, this is great. We need it, this is a necessity, so, yeah.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Free Town and the Town of Lakeville for boarding and associated services for 1-1, 2025 through 12-31, 2025.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Agenda Item 8, discussion of vote on hours of operation for the town annex building. Deb?
Yep, so this is one of the issues, we now have building and Board of Health in the annex up the street, and those are primarily inspectional services for contractors. And generally, in the, in the past, this has been discussed about having the inspectional services open earlier, because that's when contractors like to work, right? They start 6, 7 o'clock in the morning, it's easier for them to have the inspection services the earlier, the better. So I had, I had talked to both the health agent and the building commissioner about, you know, do they want to do that? Because they're both typically in the office by 7 o'clock in the morning, both of them are early birds. So they both would prefer to work and do inspectional services 7 to 3. That being said, the clerks will still work 8 to 4. So the office will, the office itself will be open 8 to 4 as usual, but, you know, both of the agents will probably be out doing inspections starting at 7:00 AM, or if a contractor needs to meet them in their office at 7 o'clock in the morning, or 7:15 in the morning, they will do that.
Yeah.
And I, you know, kind of put this out there as well, because I've been on the other side of the table as a contractor, and I, you know, can vouch that, you know, you're generally out in the morning, you want to get things going, and you need the inspectors, and like I said, these, both the inspectors are generally there at 7 o'clock in the morning anyway, so...
Yeah, that makes sense to me. And then they're probably, they're now actually, will leave at, you know...
They'll be leaving at 3 o'clock instead of 4, but, I mean, it's already docked by 4, it's hard to do inspections, and...
It's true.
I will tell you, both of them will accommodate contractors. In other words, if they need an inspection at 3:30 and Kyle's on his way home, he will do the inspection. And the same thing with Kevin, I haven't had anybody complain that Kevin's not doing inspections like, pretty quickly. So I'm not worried that, I actually think this is beneficial to, or I wouldn't propose it, like I said. I've been on the other side of this table, so for me, I think it's a win-win for the town, but the office will still be there to force, so if they need to come in and pick up a permit or do something, they can still do that from between 3 and 4.
Okay, so for the vote here, right, first of all, everyone good with this?
I, I'm 100% good with it. My only question is, is are we locking, is the door staying locked, or is it becoming interactive with the, can the public go in at 7 o'clock?
So I think it would be by appointment only between 7 and 8 with the, with the inspectors themselves.
Yeah.
Because we're not, because it won't be staffed, they might be out, you know, I know that Kyle on his way in does inspections on the way in. And I don't know about Kevin, I mean, generally, Kevin's in the office, he likes to do a lot of his paperwork from 7 to 8 in the morning, but if he had to do an inspection, I think he would.
Perfect. No, I'm only asking just for clarity.
Yeah, I think we keep the office locked, but if you needed to meet with him and say, "Hey, I'm going to be there at 7:15," then they wouldn't let him in.
Yeah. So for the vote here, should I say, like, inspection services from 7 to 3, and then the office?
8 to 4.
8 to 4, all right.
Yeah.
So I'll entertain a motion to have inspection services set 8 AM to 3 PM, and with office hours from 8 AM to 4 PM.
Motion made.
Half-day Fridays?
Wait.
No, it was the other way, 7, 7 AM to 3 PM.
7 to 3 for inspection, for inspection services, and then 8 to 4 for the office hours, right?
On Monday through Thursday, and then Friday.
Friday, I think it would just be the same half-day.
Same, yeah, okay.
8 to 12.
Yep, all right.
Do we all understand that?
We'll change the Fridays.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Luanne, sorry about that, I have to clean that one up. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 9, discussion of vote whether to approve the following policies. We have A, which is 5.1 debt management, B, 5.2 financial reserves, and 6.3 motor vehicle tax abeyments and exceptions. I actually read all three of these today, and it was, they're very good.
I think these are our last three, right? I think these are the last three policies we have.
Yeah, a couple more on the next one, Luanne, is, and that's it?
I don't know, I thought we were pretty much done, but anyways, we're getting done. Did run, these, and of course, they, they go to department heads, they go to town council, we vet them all.
Yeah, and it's like, they're all representing, like, a lot of either standards that are already set by the state, or, or Master on Law, right? A lot of it, but, yeah, I think it's good to have these...
It's good to have a baseline, you guys can always change them.
And it all seems reasonable to, like, you know, the percentages that are based on, you know, like, for how much we can borrow and how much, you know, it all makes sense. Like, one, one thing maybe to think about reading that, though, is like, I wonder if there was opportunities for us to refi stuff, you know, when rates were really low?
We have no debt.
We don't, really? Yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, we don't. I mean, now, because, right now, obviously, interest rates are crazy, but...
The only debt we have is this building.
I was going to say, I was thinking about this building.
This is a bond, a bond, and I think it's like, really low.
Yeah.
Because it was taken out maybe three years ago.
Perfect.
We, and the only other, the only other borrowing we do is our lease programs on our police vehicles, that I actually spoke to the police chief this year, and we're talking to FinCom in a few weeks here, about just budgeting what, what we would buy, the cars, as opposed to lease program, because we're paying 5, 6, 7%, why do that when we have the money available?
If we're in a financial position to, to not borrow, and...
So I think I even might get away from that. So we, we do have a couple of lease purchases, like, I think there's a fire engine we have more payment on, might be an ambulance that we have a payment on, but they're just about at the end, so I'm trying, and we've been funding things with our free cash in the fall, and I'd like to continue that, but you know, that's not always possible, but right now, as long as we can, I would like to do that.
Makes sense.
So we're, we're not, we don't need to refinance anything right now.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't right now anyways.
Right, right.
How do I?
And I don't want to take new, like, I'm clearly trying to stay away from even the lease purchases, because it's still borrowing, and it's still at a higher percentage rate, so if we cannot, we won't.
Perfect. Any other questions, questions concerning these policies?
No.
Straightforward.
Puts a smile on my face to keep hearing more of all these policies being... Yeah, they're great. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve policies A through C listed on the agenda.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Agenda Item 10, this is discussion of vote whether to designate two parking spaces at Town Hall for visitors. It took like a 20-minute, is everything in here?
Oh, I just, you know, we, we've never, we've always been, you know, 25 employees with 18 parking spots, but now that we've moved people up to the annex, that takes about six spots, 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 spots are up there. So now we have a little more breathing room in our parking lot, so I didn't know if you wanted to designate two spots as visitors only, so that the employees don't park in them, so that when, right next to the handicapped spot, so when people come to pay their taxes, they can actually, you know, they have, they have a place to park.
That makes sense to me. Do you think we won't get too much pushback from folks at Town Hall? I don't want to take someone's spot, you know what I mean? You know there's someone there.
Do you want me to take the second and third spot? I mean, there is somebody that parks in the first spot, but I mean, I, I think it'd be accommodating.
Yeah, as I...
Trevor brings up a good point, is I wonder, but nah, I don't even know if we really need to, is put a time limit on it, but how do you...
People go in the Town Hall, do their business and leave.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to park there for, like, if we had more businesses there, then it probably would be a problem, right? Because people would use that spot for whatever.
Oh yeah, to go walk around or something.
So.
Yeah, no, and I mean, and actually, if we, if we cleaned up the other side where we do park sometimes. Um, we could probably get some more employees to park over there. I've parked over there a few times, just trying to free up some more over on the other side.
Yeah, but yeah, I think it makes sense to to have two.
Yeah.
Probably the first, should probably be the first two spots, if hopefully whoever's spot we're taking is is is.
I don't, I don't expect any issues on the town hall employees, I really don't. They've got some.
Everyone agree with this?
Yeah.
Alright, so that, without, I'll entertain a motion to designate two parking spots at the town hall for visitors.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Agenda item eleven, this is uh discussion of vote on staffing needs, salary range for town planner.
So this is obviously, you know, we have nobody in the planning department right now, all the conservation or the uh. But we, we, we have gotten some candidates that are really qualified for planning. I, I think one of the issues we have is, you know, culturally with the town, we've not carried. Full-time staff in the planning department and we've done it with clerks. Um, those days are really over. Um, and we were able to do that because Kevin actually was working for the town and was very good as being the chair of the planning board. Um, you know, I think at this point, we need, we need somebody in that department that's really pushing. The agenda for the town, economic development, uh some of these street projects. In working, getting the grants the best through our ability. I don't know how that's gonna work out with the MBTA. And plus, the, the departments are pretty busy, especially if a planner is handling planning, conservation and zoning. But with that, I will tell you, and it's, people don't realize it, but the planners are very highly paid and Hanson, I was. The highest paid one other than the town administrator. So we have put on a salary range of between seventy and ninety. We've got some candidates that are pushing that limit a little bit. So I just wanted to have that conversation of how much deference do we have with this salary? And it's a double-edged sword, right? Because we've got other department heads. And employee morale to sort of factor in. It's not just about, well, can we afford it? Let's do it. It's really about the whole package. Well, what will this set off for other employees getting upset?
Comparing themselves to that.
And I don't, I honestly, I, I, I see both sides, so I, you know, if I had a real strong one way or the other, I would push it. Although I do think at some point culturally, we need to accept the fact that we need a town planner and we're going to have to pay if we get a good one. I think that's a, I, and I think a good town planner, as you can see, because I was a planner, like what we can bring to the table is a lot of grant money. We, we can make back our salaries. I don't know that I'm a planner anymore, but um. I think a good town planner is worth their weight in gold. Um, so I, I don't have an issue with paying a town planner their value, if you can get one that's qualified. Um, so that's the discussion of sort of how far can I go with the salary range on the planner, knowing that. There may be some turbulence with other department heads. And I'm not sure where it is on here, if we put it on here, but it's on here somewhere. One of the, one of the issues that has come up is maybe we can split a planner with another town. Which I had, in Hanson, we split I, IT person, just because two towns couldn't afford, IT is very expensive. Um, so that's, that'll, that's sort of the other piece of this puzzle. Look, okay, if we don't wanna go to the hundred thousand dollar range for a planner. Do we wanna entertain splitting a planner with another town close by? And I don't know that I have a candidate that would do that, but. Would you entertain a regional agreement where we maybe pay that planner a little bit more, because now they're juggling two towns? Maybe we can get, say, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar planner, but we're only paying half of that, but we only get them for twenty hours. But I do think a good planner with a good clerk can do the work in twenty hours too, if you've got the support system in place.
Do you think like, what, I mean, does Lakeville have a planner?
Lakeville's hiring for a planner right now, Rochester's hiring, Berkeley wouldn't be able to afford a planner, yeah. Um, we're hiring, there's three right there, the, and that's just local. I'm sure there's plenty more.
Lakeville probably makes, maybe the most sense, especially like.
Because of the schools and everything.
And then also like now we're both gonna be MBTA communities, right? Both have the trains, like there's.
But don't forget, you'd be competing a little bit too, so um.
Yeah.
And I don't know whether they would entertain.
As far as like grants?
Yeah, sometimes, I mean, you don't want, it's, it's like this, it's like, it's a very dichotomy. So the other thing, I mean, if you get a good planner, they don't need a clerk generally. They can do their own legwork. I didn't have a clerk. I had a clerk in the beginning and then my clerk retired, so I didn't have a clerk and I was able to run my department without a clerk.
But if you work part-time, then.
If you work part-time, you definitely need a clerk in there. So I know, there, it, it, there's no, I don't think there's a right or wrong answer here. I need direction so that I can fill that spot.
So what do you think, what, what's the number you have, I guess, in your head?
I think if I went with a full-time planner, I need probably a hundred thousand dollars. I think if I'm gonna split the planner, I need to push it up and then divide it in half, so I'm looking at fifty-five or sixty.
Yeah.
I know Carlos has been, it, it, I mean, we've, you know, because we've interviewed people and stuff, so he, he, he knows kind of.
That's the discussion, right? It's like, it's a high, it's a higher than usual number for department head. Now, is there, is there value in that department? Yeah, all departments, but this one does impact the town quite a bit, right? So the discussion is, how do we make this work without really breaking the bank and, and ultimately without really setting a, a future precedent for other departments as well, right? Because we, we're still a small town after all, right? So Deb's come up with some great ideas, especially the one sharing it between two towns. If that's feasible, that's absolutely, that's.
I also like that, sorry. I also like that, because then it can show people what a good planner can bring to the table, right? It makes it a little bit easier to swallow if we say down the road. We, we gotta go from part-time to full-time with this position, because look at everything they're doing. And, and planner, you know a lot better than I do, they do a lot with the future, right? Like, there's a lot of.
I know, that makes sense, I mean.
Pull stuff, sorry, I don't wanna cut you off, but I don't wanna forget this, is this will help pull things off of your plate. Right? Where we have Debbie because of.
And probably a lot of, and other department heads too, right? I'm sure like just any kind of grant, like things of that nature.
That's the thing, over the past few weeks or months, right, since we've lost, or others have moved on from their current position in the planning department. We have, I see them and a lot of their, their staff, right, working extra hard on planning needs, right? Luckily, right now, it's like a lot of low, but it's, it's, you know, a little bit slower right now, based on the time of year, but as that ramps up. I don't know where they will find the time to continue doing what they're doing at a, at a, at a, at a steadier, crazier rate. I just don't, I don't want that for them.
I'm gonna tell you.
Oh, it's not sustainable.
We are struggling with it.
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, both of us, and we're both putting in extra, and today I was like, I, 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 I don't, there's always so much we can do, right? So yeah, it, it's, 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 it'll be that, but you know, that's just finding some talent. I will say. That's kind of how they get a town administrator, right? Originally, way, way back when they proposed bringing in a town administrator, because they didn't have one, they did it on a part-time basis. And so they realized the need and then pushed it to full-time, so maybe if I can get somebody who is willing to split. And the other town is willing to work regional, that might be the soft landing to get the culture sort of changed. And, and people thinking of a planner a little bit differently than what we've done in the past, which is just take care of planning boards. Meetings and their agendas. A true planner does a lot more than that.
Yeah, yeah.
Has Lakeville had one in the past?
Yeah.
Oh, they have. So there you, yeah, so I guess, because my question was, is this a good opportunity for them to get into the door? Like, yes, so where now they're looking for a full-timer, because they've had a full-timer, so for them to go backwards to.
Yeah, I don't know that they'd be willing.
So I think it's gonna be hard.
But it might be better, it might be like, it might be better to have like a town that's not near us, really, or even like.
Rochester's looking right now, and I didn't check today who else is looking, but it's always.
Posted on the, that website, right? Is there like a?
Yeah, it was posted. I don't know where it was posted, I saw it.
So, yeah, the problem is, is we're now slowing it down that much more, because now we need to go to said towns. And try and work an agreement out with them.
Yeah, I think once I know that what I can do, at least I have that option, right? If you, if, if you, if you're willing to entertain it and then.
So I think, so it, numbers, I mean, your rate where I thought we were gonna be, so it's a hundred for a full-time and then sixty for a half-time, for part-time? Makes sense.
I think so.
We good with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so um, I'll entertain a motion to set a sta- salary range for a full-time town planner to a hundred thousand dollars and for a part-time to sixty thousand.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, moving on to agenda item twelve, discussion of vote whether to approve the si- and sign the estimate from Folsom Well Repair. For the, uh, well at James White Library, was it thirty-five hundred or?
Yes, we, we had come in a few weeks ago, because we had no water. Um, we now have water, because the drought, because it rained. But the well still needs repair and they think they can do it now for thirty-five hundred instead of drilling a new well.
That seems reasonable to me. Any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion uh to approve and sign the estimate from Folsom. Uh, well repaired for the well at James White Library.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, uh, agenda item thirteen, this update and possible vote on the county road water issues.
Yeah, this still continues to um be a leak on twenty-three county road. It's in the middle of the road, it's, it's undermining the actual road, which is under Mass DOT's control. Mass DOT had asked to meet with me in New Bedford last week, so I said, yes, I put this on the agenda as a placeholder. In case I had anything that I needed to bring before the board. We, we are actually meeting tomorrow, so I don't have anything new, just to tell you that it's. Increasingly getting worse. It, they keep telling me they, they might have to close the road down. Um.
And some folks don't have water at their house, right?
Right, they still don't have water.
Drinkable water, yes.
No, they don't have drinkable wa- water. And, and so um, there's a meeting tomorrow at three o'clock. That uh, we will be on to discuss with Ma- Mass DOT is driving this, they've asked for this meeting. I, I don't think the media, I don't think that anything changes. The outcome does not change. Um, Free Town, it's not our line. We're not gonna fix it. Uh, it doesn't change, but we're gonna have that meeting. I guess the only other thing that we could talk about is I. As you know, our town council is their town council, so I need to get separate counsel for this issue. I have um looked, uh, I have contacted somebody who seems qualified to work on this. I, I, I guess I could entertain a, a vote to allow me to engage with a different counsel. For the, just for this special purpose of the water line.
Everyone good with that?
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion for Debbie to seek outside counsel for the um water issues on county road.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, well, yeah, let, can be in moving on to um.
It's just a caveat to it, I have some to add to this. So I have reached out to New Bedford Council, a lot of city council members that I, that I've. Uh, known from the past, I've reached out to the mayor, um, some back and forth, some dialogue going on. Um, the issue stems from who owns it, right? Long, from eighteen ninety-six till today, who has owned this line? That's basically where it stems from. So to get that information, um, I've had, I already submitted FOIA requests or permit requests from Mass DOT. Um, and they responded today. Um, I have to, yes, they responded today, which is good, because right now what Mass DOT is doing, they're racking up a bill. Right? The concern is, there's thousands of gallons of water creating potentially a sinkhole in that area. Right? So they have to go out there every so often with manpower, salt trucks, cones and everything else to make sure that the area hasn't, you know. Gotten worse, or ice conditions and things like that. Well, that bill's racking up. That bill is continuing to increase, alright? And right now, they're wondering who, who owns it, alright? Whose responsibility is this? So I think right now, that as far as the town and water commissioners, I think we need a short-term fix and a long-term solution. And that's where tomorrow's conversation is really gonna stem from. Hopefully, that's where it goes, and then take it from there. Because a lot of, right now, there's a lot of finger pointing of who owns it, who it belonged to.
Yeah, the other day, it's New Bedford's line, right, and we pay them.
If that, that section is New Bedford line, it, they bill those customers.
We don't even bill them.
We don't bill them.
We don't touch it.
They, we don't touch it, we haven't touched it. They put it in a hundred years ago.
Like the, we pay the water on super commission and then, but they, we pay for whatever.
Right, but this isn't that way. Those, New Bedford bills those customers directly. Those customers pay New Bedford directly and they have for the last hundred years.
They're not our meters, they're nothing.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, New Bedford, so we, our commissioners reached out to their commissioners and in the arc, in our. Our thing is, if the customers call us, we tell them, hey, you gotta contact the person you pay your bill to, which is New Bedford. Uh, New Bedford is essentially saying nothing can do, and I think there's pressure being put on, on both sides, right? Especially the residents. It's only gonna get worse.
Like, so would that mean that like, there's been no maintenance on these?
Well, the, the real problem is this.
No, Bedford has taken care of this line up until this recently, and that's been, this is, this is all new. This is all new, we think it, you know, we think it was triggered by the, the um state requesting an inventory on lead pipes.
Correct.
And then they realizing that there is lead pipes in those pipes. And you know, the state coming down saying you need to fix these lead pipes or replace these lead pipes. I think New Bedford, and, and I'm speculating a hundred percent, I have no idea, but it would seem to me that they've almost decided, hey. It'd be cheaper for us to just abandon this water line and let Free Town deal with it than it will be to continue to.
But we need that, like at the same time, we do, like, it's not like you dig wells, uh, like, you know, what are you supposed to do?
I don't know, and, and so they, so I think, I mean, and I think part of the caveat, and I'd have to go back and look at my emails, was that. They said they would fix it. New Bedford said they would fix it, but they wanted all these conditions. They wanted me to agree to all these conditions that I would take it over once it was fixed, that I would be on the hook, meaning the town of Free Town, would be on the hook for payment. Why are we gonna pay for this?
Right.
Um.
We've been paying you for the service.
They, they, the homeowner's been paying, yeah. Um, there was about five different things that they said, they would fix it, but they wanted us to agree. And first of all, I said, I can't agree to anything, the selectmen would have to agree, and none of them made sense.
Right. So that, you, I, this is unfortunate, because you, this feels like something's gonna be dragged out, and this person, you know, the, the.
Unfortunately, yeah, that's what we talked about. We had the gentleman in front of us and everyone was very upfront and honest with them, we all feel for them, but unfortunately. There's nothing we, we have that's gonna take care of this.
Saying that it's the homeowner's responsibility, which this break is in the middle of the road, so you're gonna dig up the road, fix it, it's expensive. It would be expensive even if it hadn't gone this long, and now we've got undermining of the road and trying to repair that road's gonna be a nightmare.
Okay, yeah, alright. So I don't wanna speculate, so let's, let's see what happens tomorrow, and then we'll circle back on this, because.
Yeah, we'll keep, I'll keep you updated, um, but the meeting is tomorrow at three.
Okay. Alright, anything else? Will we go, we go on this issue?
No.
Alright, it's crazy, but, okay. Uh, then agenda item fourteen, discussion of vote whether to hold a special town meeting on two twenty-four, twenty twenty-five at the middle school. Beginning at seven PM. I don't have to read this public notice, do I? No.
No, that was just for you.
It was supposed to be high school, but.
Yeah, but we changed it to middle school.
High school's not available. So, yeah, thank you for noting that though, because I, it's, it's um. On the agenda, it was printed as high school, because at the time, it was the high school, but now it's gonna be the middle school. I get that right, Lan?
Correct.
Right, and then you, we wanna have a vote for them to open the warrant for submissions for, from the seventh to the.
It's on that notice in front of him.
Seventh to.
Seven to sixteen, I think.
Okay, so I, so I should read, so I should read this public notice?
You don't have to read the whole thing.
You just said to ma- a vote to open the warrant for submissions from uh January seventh to. January sixteenth at eleven AM. Sound right?
January seventh, yep, tomorrow morning, eight AM through the sixteenth.
Okay, alright, so first I'll say, I'll entertain a motion to hold a special town meeting on two twenty-four, twenty twenty-five at the middle school, beginning at seven PM.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, and then next, I'll entertain a motion to uh open the warrant um for submissions. Between January seventh, twenty twenty-five, eight AM through January sixteenth, uh, at eleven AM.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now I'll take it over to personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alright, Personnel Board, item agenda fifteen, discussion and vote where to approve the following appointments. A through C, we have Allison Sylvia as senior clerk, part-time conservation commission and assessors effective. One thirteen, twenty twenty-five through six thirty, twenty twenty-five. B, we have Craig McAllister to local emergency planning committee ISP representative, effective one seven, twenty twenty-five. Through six thirty, twenty twenty-five. And finally, we have C, Mr. Riley Minkani. As senior clerk, full-time board of health, effective one twenty-one, twenty twenty-five through six thirty, twenty twenty-five. Alright, uh, yeah, we've done some hiring and some planning on dismiss it, makes it all official. So, uh, any questions, concerns? Alright, I entertain a motion to approve the appointments made in, in agenda item fifteen, A through C.
Motion made.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And sixteen, we talked about.
Yep.
Correct. Discussion of vote on the use of regional staffing, which we just discussed regarding um the planning and land use. We have to put that to a vote? I don't think so, right? We already voted on that.
You voted.
Yeah, I think we voted on that.
So, and we get sixteen is hereby removed from discussion.
Alright, Jared gets nothing, easy peasy.
Yep, it was a hot day.
And, yeah, I just wanted to tell you that we got a grant, it's a small grant we get every year, or uh. Vicky actually does it at the transfer station for the um recycling. So we get a seventy-two hundred dollars from the state, and this year the grant came through, but it's got a caveat on it. That if you haven't approved the MBTA zoning, you're not getting it. So I'm just gonna get you.
This is just like the first taste of what's gonna happen.
I'm just gonna let you go, I'm gonna bring them to your attention as they come, you know what I mean? And I never would have expected this one, they would pull, because this is just like a run-of-the-mill one, so.
This is crazy. We, we live in a, let's face it, a very blue state, a very um, demo- Democrat leading state, right? Blue state, it's one of the blue on the map. Big on recycling, big on green energy, but yeah, we're gonna punish a small town that has a transfer station, does the proper thing. Because they're upset that we, the town exercised their right to vote and turned down their idea of increased housing across the area. Well, I find that shameful in so many ways, but I guess, I guess that's, uh, that's what happens.
And then with the new laws anyways about, like.
ADUs?
Just like the lot sizes and it, it.
With the ADUs and.
Yeah.
The common ownership stuff.
Obviously, it's not quite, you know, the density, but overall, the full density across the town with these new, you know, it's gonna be increased just based on that. Do we know how like the legal proceedings are going?
No, I, I think I, I heard that Milton will, will, there, something like April, the decision will be coming down in April. And my thought is that uh, the governor is not gonna do anything until that is resolved in April. But I hear, I, I have heard from Planning Agency that they think that she might re, um. Redo some of it, but then I've heard other people say, no way, she just spoke the other day and she's hard-fast on passing this.
Doesn't a lot of the ADU stuff kind of mitigate the three A requirements, right? When you look at the, like, like Trevor was saying, like, the, the breakout of the ADUs, the density thing. Although it's not gonna be concentrated on that one area, it's still gonna have a massive impact, it's gonna, it.
It's massive.
Right.
Everybody in town.
Yeah.
Every single family homeowner can have a nine hundred square foot ADU on their house lot.
Yep, and then a lot of people who have mu- like multiple acre lots can now split those lots, like it, it.
Little mini compound for the family.
It actually makes me happy then, you know what I mean? Because it's like, you know, the characteristic of the town, right? We had both, then.
Yeah, I mean.
This could already theoretically change a lot, never mind if you had both.
The other thing is that the governor can also just turn around and make it a law like forty B, where they just say, no, this is what you're doing. And and that's the other thing that she might just do, which is, I would prefer that over her, her, them saying, you have a choice. But when you make the choice, we don't like. It's not democracy. But if you don't make the choice, we want you to.
We're gonna take away seven thousand dollars, seventy-two hundred dollars in points for recycling the proper way because.
Yeah, this is just a, this is like a little shot across.
Yeah, absolutely.
They're they're, they're gonna just keep coming like where they're gonna, you know, say, no more grants for you or. I, we do have a couple of federal grants we're working on that those haven't been affected and those are fairly big. One is the bridge. I'm still moving forward with the bridge project and then.
But federal, that shouldn't be impacted, right?
Right, those aren't impacted. So luckily, and that's where, but federal, I will tell you, federal grants are much more difficult to manage. They're much more involved. They want everybody's time sheets. It's it's a lot, a lot of work. We have, we do have one that I'm actively managing right now. Um, which is why you you need a planner. If if I'm managing nothing but federal grants, it's difficult. They're they're way more difficult than state grants.
Gotcha.
So, and they're harder to get, right? Because you're fighting with the whole country.
It's a bigger, much bigger. Pool you're in, right?
And we're lucky that, you know, we had um Alken Gloss got us the one for the bridge and then the second one that we're we haven't been formally approved for is the new building. So um we'll wait to see if that comes in the coffers in the next month or two. We should hear on that. Pretty soon, actually.
So I think I'll just do the signatures now, are we good? Do you have anything else?
No, I think that's it. I'll just talk while you guys are signing. I mean, we got the fire station project. I toured it last week. It's framed, it's um, it's just in that condition. There's a lot of stairs, so those firefighters are gonna be in great shape. Something you don't think about, you know, you're thinking it's two stories and it's like a regular set of stairs, but it's like three flights of stairs to get to the second floor. Um, so I I'm excited for them to have single, you know, their own bunk rooms, but we're still a ways away from being finished.
I gotta go drive by there and check it out.
We're still a ways away. The C O A, the pod, is just about done. We we put the ramp on, the handicap ramp, and so we're just tweaking a couple of things. That is gonna be all set, so.
I noticed it like, it looks like the um already, I mean, now we have the town annex. That space being all open, like, I mean, looks like a lot of opportunity there for.
So the second floor, um, we are, we're waiting for um uh, the facilities department to come and clean out that room and then I will be coming back to you to, with ideas on how to upgrade that.
But town annex is working out so far?
So far, so good. I think it went smoothly. I mean, I have very few glitches and that's, you know, that's a, that's a lot. As they're up and running and it's tight still, but better, better than what we had. I have not gotten complaints, have you? So residents are pretty well good with it. Yeah, I haven't gotten resident complaints, which I'm always. So um, I think the agents and the building inspector are happy because they have their own space and it's just easier to work if you're not sitting four people in a twelve-by-twelve office.
Listen, I am proficient at this by now. So, I'll be good? So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?